So, I'm going to begin by constituting the meeting. On the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, supreme chief sovereign of the Church of Canada, and through the authority that has been conferred by the Forty-Third General Council, I hereby declare this meeting of the Forty-Third General Council to be in session for the work that may properly be brought before it to the glory of God. So, if my system resources had been working with me today, I'd be putting up a map on your screen, a map from native-land.ca. It's a map that you can go to, to take a look at where you are currently living, to understand a bit more about where, about the territory upon which you live, and about the people who have been here for thousands of years and continue to be here, the First Nations and First Peoples of this land. So, I would invite you to take a look at that, native-land.ca. I found it to be very helpful. I'd like to ask you to recognize that each of us is located somewhere on that land. Although we gather in this virtual space, the space that our bodies are located in has a real geographic reality. We gather with our bodies touching this land. Take a moment to recognize where you are, and to connect it to this gathering. In recognizing where each of us is, it is absolutely important that we recognize the stories of that place. And part of the story, both historic and ongoing, is that we live and work and worship on lands that have been part of the lives of the indigenous peoples of these places for thousands upon thousands upon thousands of years before the colonizers came. We acknowledge and celebrate that their being and their being one with this land, not just historically, but today, right now. We give thanks for the ancestors, we give thanks for the elders, we give thanks for all of the indigenous people who continue to be who the Creator has called them to be. And as well, we give thanks for the indigenous siblings who are part of the United Church of Canada. But in acknowledging the territory and its peoples, we also need to acknowledge the brokenness of relationship. History broken by the colonizers and their descendants. Treaties broken by the colonizers and their descendants. Right relations broken by the colonizers and their descendants. Indigenous people, elders, adults, children, broken by the colonizers and their descendants. We need to remember. We need to acknowledge. And in that acknowledgement, we need to be people who are working hard for right relations, each and every day. We need to be people of hope, people of resurrection, people who live the call to seek justice and resist evil with all that we are, as the United Church of Canada, as individual disciples of Jesus, and as people who are making history every single day, right now. So today, I come to you. I come to this place from the traditional and unceded territory of the Kuketlum, the Keitzie, and the Stolo peoples, from the community that I know as Port Kuketlum in British Columbia. As I acknowledge this territory and its peoples, I commit myself again to the work of right relations. I'd ask you to take a moment to acknowledge the territory and the people upon whose land you sit or stand today, and commit yourself anew to that important work. You're invited to acknowledge the territory and its peoples in the chat box at this time. If you don't know that information, when we're done the meeting, I'd ask you to go to native-land.ca, find your home, read the names, and begin to learn. As we see these names, may God challenge us and bless us in our commitment and our recommitment. Amen. I would like to turn to our equity monitors, the first of whom is Teresa Burnett Cole and Katie Curtis. And I'd like to ask if either one of them would like to share with us the questions that have been shared with the Commons and some of their thoughts as the equity monitors before you then.
Good morning. This is Teresa Burnett Cole, coming from Ottawa. Our equity questions, as Richard said, have come out and have been sent to you. Basically, what we're looking for is to address some of the challenges that were presented at the General Council meeting. So, in case you haven't seen them, they are, and these are questions to ask yourself as you're participating. Am I responding to the questions before us out of bias? Do I recognize my bias? Just because we've always done it this way, should we continue? Who's missing from around our table in this discussion? Do we need, in other words, do we need to consult wider? Whose voices haven't been heard? Have I spoken too much? Am I using the correct pronouns for colleagues? For those of you who are not used to this as part of your practice, it's a way of honoring the fact that we are, we have gender non-binary folks in our communities. And in order to make them feel welcome, we all practice care in our pronouns. And finally, am I making assumptions based on race, sexual orientation, gender, to name just a few of the ways that we can identify our intersectionality? Folks, what we're really aiming for is to have our speakers and questions reflect the whole of the United Church of Canada. Katie, do you have anything to add to that?
Hi, no, I don't. Thanks, Teresa.
Over to you, Richard.
Thank you, Teresa. And now I would turn to Tonya Anton and to elders Eileen and Grafton Anton, who are going to gather us in our time of worship.
Sigulis, Sloughwick. Tonya Anton Neongetz. I was invited from the National Indigenous Council. I'm a member of the National Indigenous Council. And I was invited to share a reflection with you. But at the same time, my parents are here, Grafton and Eileen Anton, and I would ask them to start with an opening prayer and a smudge so that when we gather, we come together with the good mind so that our hearts in the right place as we do our business of the day. So, I don't know where they are, but if they're there, I would ask my father to start.
Sigulis. Am I on it? Sigulis, kai ka, astik chivike, diga de ne hela dun, jini oyale, unu ala gantu, wodua jat daloloke, nen hau dun, awi, tay kudane, ayay, ayay kwa, kose di nahti, na chaunji, nayawoji, ji nu, ni tvarla nayandakwa, yu na ri church. Ni gari wi, ka ika, wahnis laade, nega de ne hela dun, agwe gungwi di nahti, agwe gungwi di nahti, yu, yu wa nohte, ya chaunji, nen Jesus Christu screen, nausonagungka ika di, wadu, unu wahto oni, ka yo, ji ni gari yuhto, sodu, yu wa, ya chaunji, nen, nayakwati. Ni gari wi, ka ika, agwe hu, ka ika, di nahti, nahti, yu wa liyo, nen, ni gari wi, ka ika, wahnis laade, yu wa nohtu, singa ya diyo, hau dun, aha, aha ya, aha ya, da daily state, win chi, ni gari yuhto, sodu, ka ika, kigwa di yo, kaliwi zo, ka ika, aha, kixta ha. Eileen, we, the government, Eileen will translate what I've said in some of the words.
I just want to say that it's really, really great to see each and every one of you. I do, I went through, scrolled through to see all of the people that are being, that are being on this gathering. And we know that when we gather in our community, we always use our language to introduce ourselves. And that's what I'm going to do first. Sigulis, wagwe go, onkwe huwe, ne i, oni da ark, chitwa katundi, jot sanit, nen, Huddanashoni Neongets, kaliwi, kaliwi, we sex, Neongets, Eileen Anton, ups, no le, kia, Neongets, Atnoel, ne, ogudalora. And so today, I bring greetings to you from the Oneida Nation of the Thames, also known as the Oni Da Ark People, the Standing Stone People of the, of the Huddanashoni Peoples. And so, when our elders tell us that whenever we gather for any reason, that we give thanks to Siguiyon Diza, the Creator, for bringing us together, for, because again, this reminds us of our relationship to each other. And so, at this time, I give thanks to each and every one of you for your, for your participation in this Forty-Third General Special, General Council Special Meeting. And again, we also know that whenever we gather, we give thanks to Mother Earth, because without Mother Earth, we would not be here. And so, we give thanks that Mother Earth continues to carry out her duties and responsibilities while we are able to meet here. We give thanks for the water that flows on Mother Earth. Again, we know water is so important to life. And so, we give, we give thanks that the water continues to carry out its duties and responsibilities while we are able to meet here. And as we gather our minds together, we give thanks for all of the water animals that continue to carry out their, their duties and responsibilities, because they work hard to try and keep the water so that, again, we as human beings can use it in the way that has been provided by Creator. And so, we give thanks for this water. We give thanks also for all of the plants that grow on Mother Earth, because again, we know that these, each and their regions, they have, the plants are important to the people. They bring the medicines, they bring the food, and they bring all kinds of things. They bring us the oxygen, because we have that reciprocal relationship with the, with the trees and the ones that produce the oxygen, because without these, we would not be here. And we give thanks that we are able to provide them with our breath so that we exchange breathing. And we can give thanks to Siguiyon Diza, the Creator, for all of these things that happen to all our relations and how we interact with each other. And as we gather our minds together, we give thanks also for the animals that walk on Mother Earth, because these animals, again, each and their regions are important to the people, and they give us life. We know that sometimes it's easy to forget where some of our food comes from. We go into the grocery store and we can pick out a package of meat, of chicken, and we think that, we don't even think that it's important. But these animals have given up their life so that we can have life and sustenance. And so, we give thanks for these animals that continue to carry out their duties and responsibilities while we are able to meet here. We give thanks also for the birds that fly in the air, because again, we know that these birds carry out their duties and responsibilities that, that Creator assigned to them in the beginning. And so, as we gather our minds together, we give thanks for these birds. And we also give a special thanks for the eagle, who flies high and sees far, because in our community, the eagle brings us the gift of vision that enables us to know that what we do today impacts seven generations into the future. And so today, I also want to remind us that an eagle feather is one of the highest gifts, highest honors that we can have in our communities. And when you're presented with an eagle feather, that is, that is the greatest gift from Creator. And so today, I want to raise this eagle feather that I have brought with me to share with you. I, I want to raise it in honor of Creator, in honor of the work that, that we do for Creator and in, in the name of Jesus Christ. And so, I just raise this feather to eat for each and every one of you, to Siguiyon Diza, the Creator. And so, as we bring our minds together, I also want to remember and remind us that we give thanks for the things above the earth, the thunders that come, because again, we know that these thunders are important to life. And yesterday, the thunders came and they brought the rain, the much-needed rain that was necessary in, in this area, southwestern Ontario. And so, and so as we gather our minds together, I give thanks for the thunders. And in our stories, the elders tell us, the stories tell us that these thunders keep the monsters underground that should not be here with us. And so, as we gather our minds, we give thanks that they continue to carry out their duties and responsibilities. We also give thanks for our elder brother, the sun, because again, we know that without the light, without the warmth, we would not have life. And so, we give thanks that our elder brother, the sun, continues to carry out his duties and responsibilities while we are able to meet here. We give thanks also for our grandmother, the moon. She regulates the waters and the coming of children. And so, as we gather our minds together, we remember that our society will be made up of these coming children. And so, as we gather our minds, we give thanks for our grandmother, who continues to carry out her duties and responsibilities. We give thanks also for the, for the, our ancestors, the stars, because we know again, that these stars also give our peoples, all peoples in all parts of the world, information that is important to their way of life. And so, as we gather our minds together, we give thanks for these ancestors. We give thanks also for the guardians in the four directions, because again, they give us guidance and protection as we walk on Mother Earth. And so, as we gather our minds together, we give thanks to these guardians as they carry out their duties and responsibilities daily for us as we walk on Mother Earth. And so, as we gather our minds together, we also give thanks for the messengers. There have been many, many messengers that have brought, brought messages from Creator. And so, at this time, we give thanks for these messengers. And in our, in our, in the Onguwe territory, we give a special thanks to Skunyan Delio, because again, he raised that tree that had fallen and stood again, the tree of peace, so that we could have a good mind. And at that time, he also reminded us that we need to continue to use our languages and that we need to continue to do these kinds of ceremonies, because that reminds us where we are in creation and who we are in creation. And so, as we gather our minds, we give thanks to these messengers, because again, we know that the messenger that works with the United Church of Canada is Jesus Christ, and he also brought a message, a message of love. He also brought a message of peace. And so, as we gather our minds together, we give thanks for the many, many messengers that are in the world, that have been in the world, that are, that are in the world today and that continue to bring messages from Creator. And so, as we gather our minds together, we give thanks again for each and every one of you that, that are participating in this meeting, because all of you from across Canada are part of creation. And so, as we give thanks for all of creation and all our relations, everyone here is included. And we say, as we gather our minds, we give thanks to Siguiyon Diza, and we say nyawa, mikwich, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nyonggo. Sigulis, Sloughwick. Yehunjist, Neongetz. Tonya Anton is my name. I'm from the Oneida First Nation of the Thames. The clan that I carry is Turtle Clan. And I'm happy to be here to share this time with you. I've been asked to do a reflection on a passage, and the passage that I chose in deliberation and consultation with my father, is 2 Corinthians, chapter 5, verses 16 to 21. And I'll be reading from the New National Versions Bible. It's entitled, "The Ministry of Reconciliation." So, "From now on, we regard no one from a worldly point of view. Though we once regarded Christ in this way, we do so no longer. Therefore, if any is in Christ, he is in a new creation. The old one, the old, has gone, and the new has come. All this from God, who reconciled us to himself through Christ and gave us the ministry of reconciliation, that God was reconciling the world to himself in Christ, not counting men's sins against them. And he has committed to us the message of reconciliation. We are therefore Christ's ambassadors, as though, as through, as though God were making his appeal through us. We implore you on Christ's behalf, be reconciled to God. God made him who had no sin to be sinned for us, so that in him we might become the righteousness of God." "The ministry of reconciliation for the Western Church is funneled into a personal death for all people, because Western Church are in Christ. The indigenous theology is summed up in the caretakers of our circles. Caretakers of our circles calls to the church and the words, 'We have been evolving, struggling, adapting, and growing since that time, and even losing ground too. We do not want to lose the gains we have achieved through the years in any future developments.' The Western Church posits the doctrine of discovery, which claims all lands of indigenous peoples, because they are not in Christ. In Paul's letters, he proclaims the love story of the virgin birth of Jesus Christ and his death on the cross to bring all peoples, Jews and Gentiles, back to God by believing it. The indigenous nations in Canada have embraced the love story as a way to win peace for our children, which was resulted in the TRC. Canada's Truth and Reconciliation Commission, the TRC, and United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, UN Declaration, the TRC calls to action embrace of the UN Declaration. The United Church adopted the UN Declaration and reported how their policies in reference to their indigenous constituents reflect on this, reflect this on March 31st, 2016. As the Church implements this framework for reconciliation, it has committed to developing mechanisms to report on its progress. The UN Declaration is about establishing and maintaining respectful relationship, indigenous self-government and indigenous land rights and their traditional territories. This means the indigenous faith community must exercise a truly indigenous self-determination and possess a sustainable land-based support. We are now at a Kairos moment in our struggle to reconcile the Western Church with the indigenous nations on Mother Earth. In 2 Corinthians 5:17, "Therefore, if anyone is in Christ, he is a new creation. The old has gone, the new has come." The call of indigenous people to the Western Church is shouted in the Black Lives Matter protests to bring a new day in Western Church theology, reconciling with God and his beautiful people. Indigenous theology declares, "Part of our work will challenge the canonical vision of Jesus in Western theology. Our indigenous languages, ways of life, spiritual, spiritualities, and connection to our traditional lands will be restored. We are finding our own spirituality and indigenous understanding of Jesus and his work in our communities. We will see through our, we will see through our eyes who Jesus is and decide for ourselves what this means for us as ministries and communities of faith. We are thankful for our roots in the work of the church in our past, but we will shape our future through our own perspectives. The Spirit gives us authority to do this, and we will listen to our siblings in the larger community of faith. The Creator be kind to all of us as we journey on his new road named Jesus Christ Road and Ministry of Reconciliation. So let it be in our minds, so that in him we might become the righteousness of God." Daneto, nyawa. Nyonggo.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you to, to Eileen and to Grafton, and thank you to Tonya for sharing that with us this morning. Last week, I listened to the, the very Reverend Stan McKay speak in an online workshop. And one of the things that he said was, "We still need to be working on what it means to be partners in this ministry." And I hear in what you're saying, Tonya, that, that absolute need to learn what it means to truly be partners, not people who are telling others what it is you must believe. Thank you, thank you. I'd like to ask if you have a candle with you, if you have bread, if you have grape with you, if you could bring it together. Because in listening to these words, we need to gather at table together. We need to gather to eat with one another. So, I'd invite you to bring those things together. And I'm going to light the candle that I have here with the hope the hope that the light will help us to see. That the light that Jesus Christ shares with us as a church and people will help us to see, to see each other, to understand each other, to listen to each other. May we walk together in that light. Bread, juice. In some ways, it would feel kind of strange for me to go through the thank yous. Because Eileen offered all of the thanks to Creator for all of the things that I would think of, of offering thanks for today. What I do invite us all to do as we come to Jesus' table is to remember that it is Jesus' table. It's not the table of Richard Bott. It's not the table of the United Church of Canada. Richard Bott's table is a colonial table. The history of, of the United Church's table has been a colonial table in so many ways. As Tanya talked about, the doctrine of discovery, the history of Christianity has been a colonial table. And the time to take that colonial table apart was a long time ago. That was the best time. The next best time is right now. So when we come to Jesus' table, we need to come to take it apart, to take apart the parts that we've added so that we can, sorry, that we colonizers have added so that all of us can be at that table together. Shall we pray? Holy God, we give you thanks. We give you thanks for this day, for the sky that is above us and the earth that is below us, for the wind that is blowing around us and for the sun. We give you thanks for the water. We give you thanks for the life that is not just in us, but is in all of creation. We give you thanks that that life has existed for so long and will continue far into the future. We give you thanks of, for your, your stories of your peoples and how you have been with your people, not just in the Christian story, but in the stories of all peoples in all places. We remember the stories of our spiritual ancestors. We remember the stories of the people Israel. We remember the stories of Jesus at Nazareth, of his walking and teaching with his disciples. And we give you thanks that he invites us to his table, to eat and to drink together and to be one. Holy God, we remember that on the night before Jesus was taken to what would be his death, on the night before he was taken to stand in front of the authorities to be tortured, to be made to carry his cross to his death. We remember that he gathered with the people he called his friends for a meal of, of hope and a meal of freedom. He gave thanks to you like we give thanks to you. And he took bread. He took bread and he broke that bread. And he gave it to his friends, saying, "Take this, all of you, and eat it. This is my body given for you. Each time you eat bread, remember me." When the meal was almost over, he, he took wine and he poured it into a cup. And again, he said, "Thank you, God. You are holy and, and you bring forth the, the fruit from the earth." And then he turned to his disciples and he said, "Take this, all of you, and, and drink it. This is my promise in my life's blood, my promise that sin is forgiven. Each time you drink, remember me." And so we eat and we drink and we remember. Holy God, send your spirit, the spirit that is already present into the bread and the cup that is across this land, that they and we might truly be your people, seeking justice, resisting evil, loving our neighbors as we love ourselves each and every day of our lives. These are the gifts of God for all God's people. Take, eat, drink, remember. Will you pray with me in whatever language is your language? The words that Jesus gave to his disciples, not just them, but all his disciples, all of his friends? Because God is like our mother. God is like our Father, who art in heaven. Hallelujah be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, the glory, forever and ever. Amen. I'd invite you to take a moment to remember everything that is happening in this world. To remember the people and places that are hurting. To remember the call of right relations. To remember the call that Black Lives Matter. To take a moment and offer our prayers for all creation. And may those prayers be more than just words in our heads and our hearts. May they be actions that we live. Amen. 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 May it be so. Let us continue our worship with our work. And so I would invite you to move to GS sixteen, opening procedural. And I would call on the General Secretary Nora Sanders, who are opening procedural motions.
Thank you, moderator. And after such an inspiring worship, I have the mundane task of introducing the opening and procedural motion. And I'm not going to read it for you. It'll show on your screen. And I know you've had a chance to review it. So this is simply the motion that puts in place our processes for this meeting, the bounds of council, which we're in a virtual meeting, right? Now, the corresponding members, the business table, approving the minutes of the last meeting and, and so on. So I place this, this proposal, this motion before you at this time.
The proposal is on the screen. It's now off the screen. You've had it before you. It has been moved by Nora Sanders and seconded by Deborah Richards, the Chair of the, sorry, seconded by Deborah Richards. And I would ask if there is any discussion on this motion? If there is, I would invite you to raise your virtual hand and I will recognize you. Seeing no requests for discussion, I would please ask those on computers who are in favor of the motion to click yes, those who are opposed to click no. I would also ask those who are on the telephone, if you are in favor of the motion, please raise your hand now by clicking star nine. Thank you very much. If you are on the phone and opposed to the motion, please indicate by clicking star nine. Thank you very much. The motion carries. Oh, sorry, for those of you who are searching for the yes and no buttons. Sorry about that. I'll just remind you that you need to open the participant list. You'll find that on your menu bar. When you click on participants, you'll find yes, no, and other icons at the bottom of the participant list. Thanks for asking, Hetty. So I would turn to GCE twenty-one, postponing General Counsel forty-four. And I would call on Deborah Richards, the Chair of the Business and Planning Committee of the General Counsel Executive, to introduce this.
Thank you, moderator. As we gather in General Counsel, how the church meets is an important way of us to get together and respond to God's call. And the way in which we gather must be accessible and safe for all who attend. The current situation with COVID nineteen situation is very degrees of physical distancing guidelines being in place will be a reality for our foreseeable future until vaccines in place. It is difficult to move forward in planning for a gathering of the size of GC forty-four as originally envisioned and make it the gathering that we want it to be and that it should be. When the Business Planning Committee of the GCE met with, to discuss this matter with the Planning Committee and the Business Coordinators for GC forty-four, we discussed at length the considerations outlined in the proposal around concerns for the well-being of commissioners, staff and guests, and the possibility of not being able to be inclusive of all who wish to participate. Travel restrictions that may or may not be in place at that time, that might restrict the participation of commissioners and partners. The challenges for regions in holding their annual meetings this year in person or online as originally planned and in time to select commissioners, that they could be engaged in the learning process. Added to this, we looked at challenges that are logistics considerations of planning for an in-person meeting with physical distancing guidelines. As we all know and can attest in the last few weeks as businesses reopen, we consider how we open our churches, implementing sound occupational health and safety guidelines and plans for businesses takes time and it has its challenges. Engagement of contractors to services requires contracts that we would need to enter into now and would be hard to exit at a future date without some financial penalties and other considerations. You might also ask if we consider the possibility of a fully online GC forty-four in July twenty twenty-one in our discussions and deliberations? And we did. The challenge of time to organize such a meeting and organize it well in the time that we have made it an option that didn't really provide a clear advantage to doing so. As many of you realize from your own experiences of putting services online, moving face-to-face learning online, moving meetings online, you can't simply replicate the face-to-face gatherings in an online format without a whole lot of planning and making it an equitable experience for all. The Chair of the Planning Committee for GC forty-four, Sue Broderick, is on this call and can speak further to other planning details that were considered and support this recommendation. Given all of these factors, the General Counsel Executive is recommending that GC forty-four in Calgary be delayed to similar dates in twenty twenty-two with changes to the terms of appointment of appointments and other arrangements as outlined in the proposal. And I'll ask that Shirley put that proposal up for you. And if we could just go to the section of, right there. And so that it would be scheduled in similar dates in twenty twenty-two, the terms of the Office of the Moderator and General Counsel Executive and the Commissioners of GC forty-three be extended to cover the additional year. The terms of office of members of any committee or boards appointed by General Counsel be extended to cover this additional year. And that members of the General Counsel Planning Committee be asked to continue the planning process for the forty-fourth General Counsel. Uh, and to include in that planning arrangements to enable full participation in the meeting through electronic means for any commissioners for whom it's unwise for health or other reasons to attend in person. And that the General Secretary put in place any other arrangements that are necessary as a result of these directions. Back to you, moderator.
Thank you, Deborah. There are two members of the council that we were going to invite to share their thoughts about this to begin. So I would turn to Sue Broderick, the Chair of the Planning Committee of the forty-fourth General Counsel for her, her comments about this proposal.
Thank you, moderator. GC forty-four Planning Committee spoke about this prior to talking with the Business Committee of the Executive. One of our biggest concerns was, yes, we could do electronic business meeting only, but we felt that the experience of General Counsel without our local, our global partners, without guests, without our indigenous community being, participating, we felt that wasn't what a General Counsel was about. We've been working very hard the last two or three years for general, or two or three General Counsels, for General Counsel to be an experience, not just a business meeting. And we really felt that that would take away from, by just going to an online business meeting. The well-being of each and every one of our commissioners, understanding that we are an aged denomination was a big concern. We aren't even sure if by 2021, a gathering of 500 people could even happen in Alberta. And so those were the kind of conversations that the General GC 44 Planning Committee talked about when this, when we first started talking about this in March. I have, if there's questions, I could answer.
Thank you very much, Sue. I'm going to turn to Kathy Brett, who's a member of GCE for their comments. And then we'll move to clarification.
Hi, everyone. Privilege to be here. I was a member of the Planning Committee and co-chair of local arrangements for GC 42 in Corner Brook. And as I spoke at the executive meeting, knowing the amount of work, the number of meetings, all the little pieces that go to making sure that our Ministry of Hospitality, of welcome.
And coming back with me now.
And safety, well-being of all of the members are well taken care of. We were well more than a year working on every little detail. So I can't imagine when you, you have no idea if the place is going to be available, how you're going to get people there. I can't see how that would be able to happen in such a short time as now. So as members of the executive, we took a lot of these things into consideration in making this recommendation. And as Sue and Deborah also mentioned, digitally just would not replace that gathering of, and fellowship altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I would like to ask the council if there are any questions for clarification. So we're specifically asking if you have questions for clarification. Not to, not a debate, but we're asking for any questions you might have. If you have a question, please raise your virtual hand and I will recognize you at that point. I am not seeing any virtual hands being raised for questions of clarification.
I got my hand up.
Okay.
I got my hand up here.
What, just a moment, just a moment. Okay, is that Pat?
Yes.
Okay, it keeps disappearing on me. So Pat Witten, you'd like to ask a question?
Ah, yes, is it, is it valid for me to ask a question about the date?
Yes, you can ask a question about the date.
Okay. I support the postponement of the General Counsel until 2022. But I have a problem with the word similar. And similar to me in this context would be using the dates of, say, starting on the 21st to the 22nd of July of that year. The UCW has their 60th anniversary gathering already planned for July 11th to the 15th of that year. And I think that would be a very short turnaround for the majority of women who would be wanting to go or who would be going to both events. Only like five days to go across the country. Thank you, moderator. I'm Pat Witten and I'm from Antler River Watershed Region.
Thank you, Pat. Nora, would you like to respond to that? You're muted, Nora.
Yes, you'd think I'd know this by now. Sorry about that. Thanks for the question, Pat. It is something I discussed with Beulah as President of, National President of the UCW before we brought the motion forward. And we certainly made the commitment that it won't be any sooner than the same dates that year. My guess is it might end up being into the following week anyway. But when we discussed it, Beulah seemed to feel that the five days in between, if it was as little as that, would be adequate for people to go from one to another. The last thing anyone would want is to interfere in any way with the anniversary event that the UCW are planning. And it's just too bad they're on opposite ends of the country. Beulah did kind of say, oh gee, maybe we could drive across and so on. But I'm not sure too many would want to do that. But it's kind of fun to think of the possibilities and only to say that I know that that'll be very much taken into account in the planning. And the reason it said similar instead of identical because you want to make sure that the arrangements with the convention center and the hotels and so on can be similar. And so that's my guess is it may well be into the following week anyway. But it's really good to have that reminder about the UCW.
Thank you, Nora. Catherine McLean.
Thanks, hi, everybody. From Northern Spirit Region. In our bylaws at D31, it's indicated that General Counsel must meet in person every third year. So this is bylaws, not basis of union. But does it need, in fact, to go to remit? Do we have the authority to make this decision?
Nora, would you like to speak to that?
We think that the council does have that authority, given that it's in emergency circumstances is the best I can describe it. So it's not just because of wanting to change the dates or something like that. And we did have it reviewed by legal counsel and they had the determination that it is possible.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Nora. Are there any other questions for clarification? Not seeing any hands raised. I would invite, okay, so I'm going to let you know. I'm about to invite discussion on this. If I all of a sudden see a gazillion hands going up. What I'm going to do is move us into a time where we can be in small groups for probably about 10 minutes to discuss these things. And then come back with a sense of what we've gotten from our explorations with the smaller groups. So I'm going to ask, is there anyone who would like to speak to this proposal at this time? Please raise your virtual hand. Not seeing a huge rush. I'm going to say that we'll stay here in plenary. Catherine?
Thank you very much. Again, from Northern Spirit Region, I have two points I'd like to register with members of the General Counsel. The first one is that I was elected from a presbytery and a conference that exists no longer. And so were the rest of you who are members of the General Counsel. And that's beginning to feel like ancient history. And I would like to see us moving toward governance that comes from who we really are. I have had the privilege of serving in this triennium. I'm happy about that. But I would like to see it move on to people who can represent the entirety of the region from which I come, for the entirety of Northern Spirit. And the second point is that we have, fortunately, a moderator who is probably the most skilled person that we've had in our history of moderators to be the convener of an online meeting if we were unable to go to Calgary. And given the number of significant things that are happening worldwide online. I'm not sure that we couldn't have the meeting in the regularly scheduled time, have it online. And in that way, our international guests would be there. We would have no concerns about the kinds of things that we don't even know are going to be going on two years from now. Against which we are hoping, I think, in this motion. So those are the two points that I would like to put before the court. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Catherine. Kenji Marui.
Thank you, moderator. People can hear me, okay? Right, thank you. Kenji Marui from Antler River Watershed Region, speaking against this motion. Similar points to Catherine. But also, I was part of a consultation with Dr. Robert Strang, who was part of the federal government's COVID-19 response plan, who had indicated that he anticipates that COVID-19 will be a consideration and a reality for us for about two years. So I'm not even convinced that, maybe this is a pessimist in me or a realist in me. But I'm not convinced that 2022, we would still not be facing similar concerns for public health and transport and large gatherings. I think, I mean, today notwithstanding, we have the technology. We've been working to this point over the last number of years as a General Counsel. And I would prefer an option to move to a virtual meeting at the predetermined time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenji. Jay Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to speak in favor of this motion. I agree with the previous speakers that I think it probably could be done. And I think there's, there, at any time, new participation and leadership is and ought to be welcome. I'm voting in favor because of the pace of which our life has been flowing, at least from my experience as a white woman on the West Coast and and listening to lay leaders and clergy in our area who are getting pretty exhausted with the pace of meetings in our living rooms. And if I actually had the wherewithal to do it with all good intentions in mind and I could get away with it, I would call for a church-wide sabbatical or church-wide Sabbath, if you will, to say, it doesn't all have to be done right now. And if more room needs to be made available for planners, the same planners who have, still have people in their households to take care of and people in long-term care and people in your parishes and all of that. I think I would rather put my energy right now into the work of anti-racism and expend my energy there, rather than necessarily the specifics and the logistics of dealing with a meeting. I'm not wanting to suggest that those things are mutually exclusive in any kind of way. It's a matter for me of, you know, where is the energy and where is, where's the really important emphasis right now in terms of kind of distinctions and specificity? So for me, it's not meant to be exclusive or dismissive of anybody who's spoken up until now. And I certainly will respect and abide by the decision that's made by this council. But that's where I'm coming from. I think it's, it may well be time for us to, if we can handle it. And God bless you, Mr. Moderator. Perhaps more work for you. I'm not sure how much more work it will end up creating without support of the learning. So I'm speaking in favor of the motion. Because there are things, places where I think I and our energy is needed.
Thank you, Jay. Audrey Brown.
Hi, I'm Audrey Brown. I'm representing Shining Waters Council, which is why we need to have that meeting so that people like me who are in a position but are still technically General Counsel Commissioners, even though we are moved from that area, we need to meet. So I want to speak, I would like to speak in favor of this motion. However, I have, because I do understand the difficulty in electing new General Counsel Commissioners when our regional gatherings have the issues of gathering as well. My biggest concern with that is that I think we need to take a very serious look at the accessibility that we choose when we choose to meet in person in the large gatherings and in the way that we have always met. That was one of the challenges put towards us from our diversity questions. Why do we have to do things the same way? If we put our resources into looking at technology and ensuring that people had equal access, that would, that would change everything about the way that we make decisions in our church. And it would allow different people to be at the table, or I shouldn't say different people, additional people to be at the table. And the other concern I have is if this motion does in fact pass, is there going to be a Plan B, a second, even if it's a throwaway, but an actual plan that if the ability to meet in a large gathering in 2022 does not exist, what will be the plan then? Because we cannot put off again. And I think we need to at least have that secondary plan. Because I agree that the things that I'm hearing sound like, and we, no one can predict this, but it may be that large gatherings like that do not, are not allowed to happen. So even if the plan is that we meet in smaller regional areas and connect together, I do think we need to have that plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Torrin Mike. Torrin? Did you wish to speak?
Okay, I'm going to, Torrin, unless you'd like to speak, I'm going to move on.
Tim Bowman.
Thank you, moderator. Tim Bowman, Pacific Mountain Region. A General Counsel is more than the plenary session. Many useful things happen in various face-to-face events outside the plenary gathering. And I don't see that being a possibility for an online meeting. And so I would suggest that this proposal is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Nora Sanders.
And I just wanted to speak to the last question that Audrey asked about whether there'd be a Plan B. And I think that's the intent of Section 4 within the proposal, where it says that be asked to continue and to include in the planning that planning arrangements to enable full participation in the meeting through electronic means for any commissioners that can't attend. But I think what was intended there was that for them, it would be the same experience as if they were there. And that as the backup plan would also be the planning for the possibility of an electronic meeting a year later.
Thank you. Thank you, Nora. Selena Mullany.
Thank you, moderator. Selena Mullany, I'm in the Canadian Shield Region, but I used to represent Montreal, Ottawa. So I appreciate Audrey's concern about representation. Whether we end up doing an in-person or a virtual meeting, my greatest concern is barriers to participation. And that's something we talked a little bit about at GC 43, which was my first GC. And it was a wonderful experience, but it's also, my heart still beats when I address the council. And I just recognize that for many folks, continuing with a virtual conference makes participation for folks who are new to GC even more complicated. You don't have that good friend sitting next to you, giving you good advice. You don't have Lurie Doyle across the room and you can't say, hey, Larry, I want to put a proposal forward. What should I do? So I just, I really want to name, no matter how we do that moving forward, that barrier to participation is something I'm very concerned about us looking at.
Thank you very much. Selena. Torrin Meg, you would like to speak?
Just a quick question. Does this body have the authority to extend the terms for the moderator and anyone else who'd be affected from this proposal?
I'm going to turn to the General Secretary for a response to that, please.
Yeah, we did have that reviewed by council at the time the proposal was developed. And the thinking is that, yes, it does as a body and that this is also part of a response to an emergency situation.
Thank you very much. Tim Rayburn.
I represent Western Ontario Waterways. I'm also on General Counsel Executive. I just need to raise the fact that technology is an unequal power across the country. And as we talk about the possibility of an online meeting, we just need to be aware that not everyone has equal access. Even if we go to regional council offices, that becomes still a challenge in terms of bandwidth, et cetera. And the other reality is if we meet online, we have the reality of today where we start at 11:30 and we can only go to a certain point in the evening in terms of the time changes that are across the country. So electronic meetings in lieu of a physical meeting, I understand the realities of that. So electronic meetings in lieu of a physical meeting, I understand the realities of that, but it's not a universal solution either. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Are there others who would like to speak to this proposal? Rolanda Taylor?
You are live. Hello, everyone. I'm from Treaty Two, Boise, Manitoba, Prairie de Pine Regional Council. I used to be in the Montreal, Ottawa years ago, and also in Saskatchewan. I'm in favor of the proposal. What we were talking about is people being able to have full access to the meeting. We've been going on Zooms and different types of online meetings, and there are some limitations. And I think the full presence of people being there and being able to voice their opinions and seeing each other, the very presence of people is very important. And the camaraderie that we also find, I know what when I started at, on the general, in the meetings, the very first time, and the excitement of seeing the people and everyone and just being able to hear and listen and see them. So that is my point. And hopefully, then, we'll see what will happen with the decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Samuel Dantoko?
Oui, merci. C'est Samuel Dantoko. Je parle depuis Sherbrooke. Je suis membre aussi du Comité Exécutif Conseil Général. Je parle en fonction de mon expérience locale assez curieusement pour appuyer la proposition et insister sur le fait que Zoom nous a appris. C'est que même lorsqu'on retournera dans le sanctuaire, il faudra quand même permettre à ceux à qui Zoom permettent de nous rejoindre, de continuer. Ce que je veux dire, c'est que ce n'est pas either or. Ce n'est pas ceci ou cela, mais c'est les deux en même temps comme la secrétaire générale l'a indiqué. Et sur le point 4 de la proposition, faudra qu'on insiste pour qu'on puisse se rencontrer en personne, mais qu'en même temps on utilise la technologie pour inclure davantage. Tim avait raison que si on fait exclusivement avec la technologie, on va exclure certaines personnes. Mais l'avantage de ce qu'on va faire en repoussant deux ans, c'est de nous permettre de nous réunir en personne pour ceux qui le peuvent, mais aussi d'investiguer les moyens technologiques pour inclure encore davantage de personnes qui pourraient ne pas assister en personne. Voilà. Donc, je pense que quelque chose malheur et bon, la technologie peut venir comme quelque chose qui complimente notre rencontre, personne à personne. Et je vous remercie.
Merci beaucoup, Samuel. Martha Wood? Oh, sorry, just before Martha speaks, I'm noting comments about the concern with translation. If you go back into that little box, you'll notice that when you look underneath the translation, you can remove the original audio or you can make it quieter. So if if you aren't able to, you'll be able to to turn down the person who is speaking. So you need to go back into the spot that's marked interpretation. Martha Wood?
Hi, Martha Wood, Shining Waters Region. I just want to speak to the mental health impact of going online. I know that I have not been to any of my region's lay leader Zoom meetings because my mental health cannot handle any more Zoom meetings or any more technology and stuff online. And I think that we need to consider that when we're looking at meetings. And if we decide to do this all online, we really need to think about people's mental health.
Thank you very much. Are there other comments or questions regarding the proposal? Roy West? Okay, hand to spirit. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the proposal?
Sorry, moderator, I was on mute.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Roy.
Thank you. I speak in support of the proposal. I speak from First Dawn Eastern Region. I'm an infectious disease epidemiologist, and quite frankly, I do not see in the future there being much difference in July 2021 as opposed to July 2022. However, as the Chair of the Planning Committee for the General Counsel in Cornebrooke, the experience of the work has led me to say that the Planning Committee needs as much time as possible. And in these very different times for working and planning together, I believe that's essential that we give them the extra time until 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Steve Barube? You're muted, Steve.
Sorry.
No, you're 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 live now.
Thank you, moderator. Arun Haddi Roy, the Indian author, talks about this being a time that is a portal moving through a pandemic. And we can either choose to drag all of the old stuff with us, or we can move more lightly through this time and look for new ways of living more justly. And I would hope that with this proposal that I support, that we might look for different ways of dealing with the situation as it is right now in terms of pandemic, because I too believe it will be carrying on forward into the near future, into the foreseeable future. And so let's not just look at doing the meeting differently online, but also how we do the meeting and focus far more on justice in the issues that are pertinent to the church rather than the administration of the church. Thank you, moderator.
Thank you. Folks, I understand that there are issues with the translation service, not not with our translators, but with the the Zoom service at the moment. The folks, our tech folks are taking a look at it and are working on that. So we'll be figuring out. Okay. Oh, Salvi, I think we are going to end the language interpretation and start it again. So I think that we will do that right now.
I ended it and started it again.
Thank you very much. It has been restarted, so you may need to go down and make sure that you are once again set for the the language that you wish. Thank you. And thank you to everyone who's helping us to keep this meeting going. Are there any other comments or questions from the council? I note that there are many, many comments in the chat box and just want to make sure that people have kept an eye over there. And as part of of that, if there are any points that have not been made, then I would just check. I'm not seeing anyone who wishes to speak showing up. There is a point of order that's been noted.
Richard, I just wanted to, it's Sarah Brewer. I am conscious that not everyone has access to the chat. And so when we're posting comments about it in chat, then there are people who cannot be in here what's being said. So just a reminder to folks.
Thank you very much, especially those folks who are on the telephone. They they won't have access to the chat box. So that if there are comments that are important for the entire council to hear, it's important that we come to the the gathering. And I've been asked if I can just remind everyone that the motion that's before us is about postponing the General Counsel. It's the proposal that is in front of us is offers that change of date. And as Nora spoke, the whole virtual meeting versus physical meeting is something that will need to be considered by the Planning Committee and not even versus how how we use both of those tools. But the the proposal is there. Can I ask that the proposal be brought up on the screen? And I would note that it is moved by Deborah Richards and seconded by Sue Broderick. I'm just going to check my participant list. And I'm, as it's up there on the screen, moved by Deborah Richards, seconded by Sue Broderick, I just need to check again if there are any comments or questions. If so, please raise your virtual hand. For those of you on the phone, you raise the virtual hand by clicking star nine. I'm not seeing anyone come, so I believe that we are going to move to a decision on this. So I'm going to clear everything that's.
Sorry, Lorna's standing ready, had her hand up.
Oh, thank you. Lorna? Lorna's standing ready. Would you like to speak to this?
Hello?
Hello?
Good morning. I pushed wrong, but I'm sorry. I got on late, and it's an interesting meeting. Make which?
Thank you, Lorna. I know the feeling. It is truly an interesting meeting. Okay, so I think we're going to move to the vote then. Okay, thank you. I will read the proposal motion. It is moved that the 43rd General Counsel approve the recommendation of the General Counsel Executive that one, the 44th General Counsel scheduled to take place in Calgary July 22, 26, 21, be delayed for a year to be held in Calgary on similar dates in 2022. Two, the terms of office of the moderator, the General Counsel Executive, and the commissioners of the 43rd General Counsel be extended to cover this additional year. Three, the terms of office of members of any committees or boards appointed by the General Counsel be extended to cover this additional year. And four, the members of the General Counsel Planning Committee be asked to continue the planning process for the 44th General Counsel and to include in that planning arrangements to enable full participation in the meeting through electronic means for any commissioners for whom it is unwise for health or other reasons to attend in person. And five, the General Secretary put in place any other arrangements that are necessary as a result of these directions. I am now going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please click yes. All those opposed to the motion, please click no. For those of you who are on the telephone, if you are in favor of the motion, please raise your virtual hand by clicking star nine. For those of you on the telephone, if you are opposed to the motion, please raise your virtual hand by clicking star nine. The motion carries. Thank you very much for your discussion on this matter. And thank you to the Planning Committee for their willingness to begin to do the the work on that. I'd like to propose a 10-minute stretch break. I don't know about the rest of you, but my back and backside are needing a moment of stretch. And I'm seeing a request for a vote count. I will check with the business table on that. Thank you. So take 10 minutes to stretch, and then we'll come back with that information. Thank you.
What? What? You broke up with her? Aw. Why?
Just to let, just to let you know, whoever. Yeah, thank you. You you were unmuted, so just make sure your microphones are muted.
Richard, just in case it matters, your camera is still on, just in case you wanted to know. Okay.
Folks. Folks, I need to check. Can you hear me? Thank you. Thank you very much, Charlotte.
Okay, yeah, you sound fine. I don't know if you saw my note.
Yes, please feel free.
Brother, you muted.
Folks, we are just talking with the Business Committee about the length of the rest of the meeting. We are going to move on. I was asked by a number of people what the count was from the last vote. It was an overwhelming majority at 205 in favor and eight opposed. Okay, I'm sorry. I just need to switch between applications on my phone here. Okay, so we're going to move on to oh, the update report from the moderator and General Secretary. So the General Secretary invited me to start. And so I'm going to turn this over to Jordan, if you wouldn't mind stepping into the chair, and I will step out.
Certainly. Thank you, moderator, and I will turn the floor back over to you for your report.
Thank you very much, Jordan. One of the things that has been really interesting for me about this time is that while we only met about six years ago, or six months ago is the General Counsel recall meeting. You'll notice that it feels like six years ago. So much has been happening over the past few months that it's difficult for us to note everything in the written report. My life has gotten quite different than I had expected as moderator over the last few months with COVID-19 being the primary reason. I had the chance to visit Laqualands in Northern B.C. and to meet with members of the community there just before we all recognized that it was time for us to settle in place. And so I returned to my home in Port Coquitlam in British Columbia. Because of concerns from my doctor about a breathing condition that I have with not knowing what COVID-19 would do at that time, he put me on complete isolation. So that meant that for about two and a bit months, the only place that I saw people was online other than those who made sure that I got food and watering, basically. And that's meant that being online has been a very important place for me to connect with the wider church. My isolation time stopped a few weeks ago when data came in that suggested that I don't have a higher co-morbidity rate than anyone else. And so I'm still being careful. I'm masked when I go out, especially when I'm in places with other folks. And I don't tend to go out very much. But the biggest thing that it's done is changed the way that I've connected with the church. Some of those things have increased. The daily prayer with ministry personnel has been something that has been both good for me and for others. I'm planning on bringing that to an end for the summer and we'll see what other prayer times we can offer as the fall comes together. Increasing the number of times that I was doing what we call ModCon online, moderator conversations online that were once a month, moved daily and then moved to weekly, and now are back to being once a month. Being able to participate in events that, in all honesty, I wouldn't be able to get to because they would have been on one coast to the other coast in eight hours difference has allowed me to participate in a memorial service, has allowed me to participate with youth groups, with gatherings of youth groups, online gatherings of youth groups in various regions, and in meetings that I wouldn't have really had the chance to even just sit and listen without us having taken this technology to heart. And so one of the things as moderator, I would like to say to all of you, not just ministry personnel, but congregational or community of faith members, you have done amazing work in figuring out how to continue your ministry in this changing time. And that has been probably the biggest part of my ministry during this time is trying to be supportive of you connecting with your communities of faith and with the wider community in the ways that you have been doing so well. Some of you, that's been through technology. Others, it's been through old technology, pen and paper. And others, it's been taking that walk and making sure you wave at each house that you're passing by and praying for the people as you go down that street. I just really want to thank you for expanding your understandings of what your ministry is as the church and living into that. It's also made major changes for other groups, for our camps, for ministries that are connecting with people who are vulnerable. Many of our ministry teams there have had to continue during this time with their work face to face, and that's been difficult. So I hope that we continue to support all of those ministries and remember that those ministries of being together with people who are on the margins continue, not just in your region, but right across Canada and our connections through mission and service around the world. The other note that I would make is that I just finished two weeks of holidays before I came onto this. I had come to a point where I had, as was mentioned earlier by one of the members of the council, I hit my mental health space where I needed to step away from the computer. And so I took two weeks to be and to pray and to do everything I could to stay away from the computer, which I did not do very well, but I tried hard. And during that time has been much of the world's response to the death of a number of black men and black women, black people in the United States and responses here in Canada to the deaths of indigenous men and women, deaths many times with and by police. And we continue as a church to try to understand how we live in the racism, both individually and corporately, systemically, that is part of who we are. And that has been something that I have continued to work on personally. And I am deeply thankful that the General Counsel Executive, that the working groups are helping us to find ways of standing up and speaking, but not just speaking, but the challenge that was offered by the black clergy in the video, to listen, to speak and to act. The call that happened in the prayers of lament and the call to resurrection and hope, all of that is what I am being changed by right now. And my prayer is that that's not just changing me as moderator or me as Richard, but that's changing us as this community of God's people called the United Church Canada. So that's my update. Thank you very much.
Thank you, moderator. I wonder if folks will just join me in a moment of prayer for our moderator. Holy One, we give you thanks for Richard's leadership, for his courage in these challenging times, for his humble and open heart, his listening, his speaking, his acting, and his inviting our church to do the same. We pray that you will continue to bless him in his life, in his ministry, in his service as moderator. May we continue to be inspired and encouraged by his leadership. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen. And now, moderator, I hand the chair back to you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that you've been here to do that. I would now turn to the General Secretary for an update on her report.
Thank you very much, and I'll keep it brief. This meeting was called to be for a specific purpose, and you've dealt with that purpose, which was the decision about General Counsel 44. And as you saw from the report that we did, it wasn't the comprehensive report you would normally have at a General Counsel meeting, but more really about the context of our times. And a lot of what Richard has just said, I would say ditto. Aside from I wasn't stuck in a condo without seeing anybody for three months, but still, we're all confined these days, and it's a unique time in family life. I'll just say that, as I know everybody else is experiencing as well. And I was remembering that I think last October when we met, I said, "I won't be there for your next General Counsel meeting because I'm retiring." And well, here I am, and I'm not sure if I'll still be here in October or not. I might be. So I'm not going to make any predictions. It depends. I think that my successor will be appointed by then, but I've indicated that I would be available depending on the time needed for transition and that kind of thing. So I guess I'll just say that my predictions about the future in the last six months have not been accurate because nothing's happening the way any of us imagined. because nothing's happening the way any of us imagined. I have been really inspired and encouraged by seeing the way the church has responded to such unique times. I haven't, I didn't get a lot of questions in response to our report, but I'll just say, as with Richard, I'm finding this time as a time, I've been on Zoom calls in different places and so on, a chance to connect. And I just invite any of you, if there's things we don't get a chance to raise or discuss today, I'm pretty much either on Zoom or on my email, sitting at home most of the time. So I do try to take like time off and, you know, weekends and stuff, but during the week, I'm pretty much there and love to hear from you and just engage in anything. A little bit of an update on, you know, even since the time we wrote the report, there's been a lot of work the Executives Committee on Anti-Racism has met. And I just want to make sure people know who's on that committee because they may be people you want to talk to. One is Jordan, who you've just seen and so appropriate as I think of sitting next to her at the end of General Counsel last time and the grace and courage with which she chaired that session where we heard the painful stories and the important stories that were shared. Also on the working group, Paul Douglas Walfel, Janet Sigurdsson, Larry Doyle, Hannah Park. And I have the privilege of working with the working group. And it's really their leadership and that of the White Privilege Working Group, which is now has a new chair. The previous chair, Bill Smith, had decided it was just time. Back around Christmas, he indicated that he needed to move on. He'd retired some time ago from his conference role and so on. And Shannon McCarthy, Regional Council Executive Minister for, I'll just say for simplicity, the Three Prairie Regions or the northern part of the Alberta one and so on, is now chairing it. And we just thought it was so important to have that connection with the regions as well as with the General Counsel Office so that we're all working on these things together. The harassment policy has taken a long time to rework, partly because of so much input from different perspectives was sought and gained. It's just about ready now to be put in place. Really, what it did is make it more clear how it applies to racialized people and also make it more clear how to use it, how the process works. I just had a note this morning that we're adding some more sessions of the racial justice training. What a great problem to have that it's been oversubscribed. It wasn't just an easy one to fix because it takes the skilled presenters, facilitators, to offer that work. But we have added some sessions and there'd be more work done on that. It's an ongoing, important topic. And I think what's been so encouraging in the last few weeks has been the number of things popping up across the church, the Facebook group on Black Lives Matter, the work that Rob McGauley has done, the proposal that Bob Filier is going to bring forward in a few minutes, that it does feel like this is a priority in so many places now and in many congregations, too. In the congregation where I attend in Toronto, they canceled last Sunday night's activity in order to take part in the amazing worship that the black clergy offered. They also have a Thursday session on these topics to just give people in the congregation a chance to ask questions and begin to engage and so on. And it's sad that it's taken this long to get to these things, but really encouraging and exciting that I do believe that change is afoot. I don't think I'm going to say anymore right now. I'm open for questions either in this session or, as I say, give me a call or send me an email or set up a Zoom with me, and we can talk further. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Nora. I would echo those same things that Nora said. If you have questions for me, please feel free to contact me at moderator@united-church.ca and see if we can have a conversational time. We've had some questions about timing for the rest of our meeting, and I've been checking with the business table. We are going to, sorry, I'm just double-checking my notes on another device. So we're going to move into the next proposal. And probably, my guess would be about a total of a half an hour for the next proposal. And then closing procedurals and courtesies after that should probably be about another five to six minutes. So I'm guessing probably about 35 minutes. And we're going to move to the next, sorry, the next proposal, the proposal towards an anti-racist denomination. I'm going to start by going to Alan Buckingham, the Chair of Business, just to explain the process for this.
Thank you, moderator. And so our hope is to move through this as quickly as we can, but we did feel like it was important to make sure that we did give it appropriate time as well. And so we had spent some time elsewhere, and now we're in need of your patience, and we thank you for that as we spend some time on this important piece of business. So the process will be that we will invite the mover to speak for five minutes. And then we will take some time and we'll send us all into breakout groups of five. So small breakout groups, so you get an opportunity to give some feedback and some opinion of it amongst yourselves. And we'll do that for 15 minutes. And we're hoping with a group of five that sharing your thoughts and feedback on this proposal will, in 15 minutes, will be okay at this point in our meeting. And I'll encourage you to pick a recorder for that so that you can take some notes and then send them in to gce@united-church.ca. And then that feedback will be able to be included with the GCE, kind of like your discussion group feedback gets included later on. So they will try and incorporate stuff. So the proposal will then be, we'll have a proposal to refer the proposal. I know lots of proposal words. So that the proposal that you will deal with will be to refer the proposal that has come as new business. Often in this kind of special meeting, we wouldn't have dealt with the new business, but we felt it was important to take a bit of time. And those notes will go along with the proposal forward to the GCE to be incorporated, as you'll see when you look at the referral proposal, incorporated with the other work that Nora talked about and other work in the office going forward. So that's kind of briefly how that proposal or how that process will work to deal with that proposal. Thank you, moderator.
Thank you, Alan. So I'm going to begin by calling on Bob Filier.
Thank you, moderator. So this proposal is moved by myself, seconded by David Pollard from Chinook Winds Regional Council. Background to the proposal. When we gathered in person two years ago, we heard from many commissioners about the pain and damage that racism has caused in our family, our church family. Let us not forget what happened. To do so would be to commit a sin that's foundational to white supremacy and white privilege. The proposal is offered by two cisgendered male white guys, white people. That's quite intentional. This is the work of the white church and within that, the most privileged of the white church to do. The proposal has language that is uncomfortable. Please let yourself be uncomfortable and resist the temptation to be dismissive. Truth often lies in the moments we encounter discomfort. Truth that makes us comfortable rarely changes the world. It just helps us entrench the way we already think about God, about humanity, and about creation. Last week, my board and M&amp;P met. We talked about an anti-racist statement and what that would look like for our community of faith, for us to say, "Black Lives Matter," and then turn that into action, to be intentional about rooting out racism in all its forms. It was a hard series of meetings. People were very uncomfortable. And yet, we named the reality that racism exists in our community and that we, as a church, were no longer willing to accept that. And then we started talking about what that might look like. Making a statement, attending a book study, doing training, none of those things are the destination. What we're talking about is changing our orientation about how we see, think, feel, and behave towards one another. There is no quick fix, no proof text, scripture verse from Jesus that will end racism. Yet there is the gospel. There is the way of Christ of loving, truly loving neighbor. But if we don't turn and orient ourselves towards Easter, knowing there will be Good Friday moments, nothing will ever change. Our proposal towards an anti-racist denomination seeks to do just that. Name the very good work that has been done and is in the process of being done, like the denominational statement that was released on Thursday by the GCE, and acknowledge that there is much left to do. It is an attempt to name concrete ways that we, as the United Church of Canada, can start the process of shifting from destination to orientation. Moderator, I think that introduces the proposal along with its preamble and then the list of possibilities that it contains after that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So you've heard the introduction. This is the time where I would invite us to move into groups for about 15 minutes, for us to talk about the proposal, for us to talk about the possibilities for the General Counsel Executive to be thinking about. And we'd like your thoughts and ideas about the proposal. We also like to hear about the things, as Bob was saying, about what is happening in your communities of faith and your regions to already begin some of that work so that the General Counsel has that understandable. For those of you who are Francophone or who wish to have this conversation off-francis, I would ask, please, that you remain in this plenary space. So you'll be invited to go to a small group. Please click later. And what that will do is leave you in the space because that will allow translation and allow people to be able to speak together. For the rest of us, I would invite you to go into small groups at this time. I'd ask you, in those small groups, to please choose someone who would be a recorder that would be willing to email your thoughts, your group's thoughts, to the General Counsel Executive if a listener group... Shirley, can we please break?
I'm just setting the time limit on the room, sorry.
Bob has placed a link to the proposal in your chat space. And Miriam has noted that small groups aren't safe for everyone. Okay, I'm going to ask if you don't feel that you can be in safe discussion to not go into the small group at this time. And I will ask you to send your individual comments to the gce@united-church.ca. If you do not feel that you can enter into a small group, please don't join a small group. Let the conversation happen and send your comments to gce@united-church.ca. And can we break into the groups, please? You'll find going on your screen an invitation for you to join a small group. And I'm just sitting here very still, making you think whether or not everything's working. We're just in the process of trying to get the tech working to move into small groups.
Yeah, I am pressing. Open all rooms.
And it's not happening. This may be a really good note to tell us not to. We aren't able to do it.
I don't know.
Why don't you turn off the English-French interpretation and see whether that's starting causing the problem?
Okay.
Worth a try because we've not had this trouble before.
All right. And Jeanne, you're supposed to...
It may also be that this is, there are 219 people that are trying to get into rooms and the system is struggling.
I do not understand why it's not starting.
Okay, so I think what I'd like to ask us to do is to take the next 15 minutes in plenary. And I will be watching the time, and at the end of 15 minutes, I will say that we've closed the time. And I will ask, please, that each of us take time to think this through and send our thoughts to the General Counsel Executive through GCE, through gce@united-church.ca. And thank you, Steve. So I would open the floor for discussion, as I asked around ideas.
We need the booth.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand.
Steve, there is no booth.
It's coming.
Okay, thank you.
Did it start? Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I would call on Jay Olson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Jay Olson from the Pacific Mountain Region, and I speak in support of this proposal. The executive of the Pacific Mountain Region met together and made a statement and a commitment to the anti-racism work. And this proposal that Bob has brought is very much in that same spirit. And so though I'm not for the executive as a whole, I can say that it echoes well the intention of the executive of the region and the work that we're going to put forward to the whole body. So thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has thoughts that they would like to share with us about the proposal or about what's happening in your communities of faith, things to help the General Counsel Executive as it takes these and moves with them? Are there any comments? So I'm going to raise my non-virtual hand. One of the concerns that I have when we come into a time like this is that it becomes really important for us to actually talk about these things, to actually take the time to do some thinking and talking about what it is that we're bringing. Because one of the things that happens is we often just send it off. So I'm just wondering if there's anything from the court. Christian? Christian Black?
Yep, coming. I'm unloading myself and I'm going to start my video.
Okay.
So I'm joining you from Humboldt today. Normally, I am in central Ontario. One of the real challenges for me is engaging the congregation in discussion around racism without us becoming defensive. And I have found that in my work as a clergy person, it requires me to be incredibly honest and vulnerable in naming my own latent racism in order to allow others the safety... In order to allow others the safety and freedom. And I think that's a role of leadership is often to become vulnerable. And do the hard, hard logical reflection and work to tease out the way that we in fact have racist attitudes and that our commitment to inclusive language or as an affirming congregation who including people regardless of gender orientation, socioeconomic ability, blah, 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 blah. It becomes just that blah, blah. And how do we make the stories real? How do we name our own stories? And I think it's the narrative that that we lack. The the narrative of saying, this is my experience of discovering that I have in fact racist tendencies, racist attitudes, and I have engaged in racist behavior. Because I'm almost as privileged as Bob Thillier in this environment and context, the the main difference is that I happen to be a woman. But in every other way, I have huge power. And that is hard. And I think we had to do the same thing, and they're still trying to do it in terms of truth and reconciliation with the indigenous peoples. I think it's a very similar issue that those who are white have to name that they are good people who have bad behavior, thoughts, tendencies, and I think that's very hard. Thank you for your time, Mr. Moderator. Good to see you again.
Thank you. Heather Laffler.
I'll just start and you start my video. There we go. I just wanted to offer an experience that we had last night. We have an evening on a Friday evening we call Faith, Food, Friendship and Fun. And it's a group of between twelve and twenty people who have dinner together and and talk together in a more intimate way than we can do Sunday mornings. And felt really strongly that we needed to talk about Black Lives Matter and the context we're in. But in our group, we have a police officer and we have the one black man in our congregation. And I didn't know how to make it a safe space. And so we chose the grandfather teachings that Deb Anderson Pratt offered to on our worship materials for the United Church and used our First Nations as in our relationship with First Nations as a place of conversation, but use the very simple question. When have someone's words brought you hurt or healing? And talking about words mattering in that context, the police officer was able to go back to an experience where she had had stopped a person who she had no idea of race and for speeding and was very hurt by his anger because he was black. And now because of the context, she can put herself in his position in a different way. And so while it's very uncomfortable to be a police officer, she can now understand in a different way. And the black gentleman talked about how he had been in the nineteen fifty's kicked out of a church for being black in the States. And the next day received an invitation from Metropolitan United to come and be a soloist in Canada and how those two together were hurt and healing side by side. And the spirit was at work. And so that simple question, when have someone's words brought you hurt or healing? Because of the time we're in, help us to lift up really difficult things. And so I don't have many answers at all, but I invite us to start with very simple conversations.
Thank you. Peter Haddo.
I'm Peter Haddo from North Bay, Ontario. I'm representing Andrews Church. What I'm about to say represents me. I was at G C forty-three. And I have to admit that when I left G C forty-three, I left not very happy with myself. I left very depressed. I left very angry with my own feelings. So I'm talking as a white male privileged who happens to be gay. And I thought I'm on the margin. And I'm discriminated against. So I realized on my drive home that I that I do have racism. And I realized that even though I have indigenous and black family members, I've always acknowledged where they come from. But I never really saw them for who they were, who they really were. And by that, I mean that I saw them as my nephews and nieces. But I didn't see them as being indigenous and I didn't see them as being black. And so a whole part of who they are, I never saw. So my journey from G C forty-three has been a long journey of reviewing things and and I actually wrote my nephew's nieces and apologized to them that I didn't see them. And I didn't see that 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 my nephew's nieces were indigenous. I didn't see the hurt that they were that they got from outside. Because all I saw was my nephew's nieces, and I think I was colorblind. So I think we, as a church, we need to look at our congregations. We need to look at the way we set things up. And I think we have to open our eyes. We can't be colorblind. And I belong to an affirming congregation. And I can tell you that even though we are affirming and we say all the nice things that we're supposed to as an affirming congregation, there is still in our pews at our church, there are people who have problems. And the problem, they don't voice their problems. It's a silence. And silence hurts people. And I think we need to have the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Kenji Marui.
Kenji Marui, Antler River Watershed Region. I support this proposal, the things that are presented and written there. But I and I recognize that it is a document for the white church by the white church. But as a person of color, I'm struggling to find my place in that. As a leader of a congregation, if I were to talk about white privilege, it sounds false coming out of me and my body or without and to do so without coming across as being accusatory. So I don't know if there's any kind of mechanism or maybe a companion piece needs to come from the black indigenous people of color church. But I support everything that's in there and I acknowledge that the racism I face and live with is very different than the racism that black people live with. But I'm yeah, caught in two worlds here and I'm not exactly. It's tricky space to navigate. And if I'm not on top of my game all the time, it doesn't always go well all the time. So I value this, but I'm still seeing work needing to be done in a place for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenji. Penelope Culpersen. Penelope, you need to turn your microphone on, please. You're muted. Oh, you're unmuted now.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm Penelope Culpersen and I come from central Ontario. And I we in in our area here, we we definitely support the proposal and are in favor. And as it echoes also the intentions of our region. And we found it helpful in the past couple of days to come across a book called White Fragility by Robin D'Angelo. And we're in the process of reading this now and we'll be studying it in one of the churches in Morecworth. And I look forward to engaging more and I just wanted to say that that it is definitely an awakening and I too came home as Peter did from G C forty-three with mixed emotions and and it opened my eyes a lot being at that at that conference. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We've reached the fifteen minutes that we had set aside for for this conversation or sharing. I would ask, please, if people would send. So there are a couple of comments that I'm noting in here. This proposal came to us even though we don't normally have new business. I normally would have just gone to General Counsel Executive or have waited for another General Counsel meeting. So part of this is to give us in this space the chance to do some reflecting and to share those reflections with General Counsel Executive. So thank you. Please make sure that you do some of that reflecting and send that on to us. Hold on. So thank you very much, everyone who shared their thoughts, but I would ask, please, that that people send their thoughts and their reflections to General Counsel Executive, G C E@united-church.ca. And I would like to turn to Deborah Richards for the motion to refer, please.
Thank you, moderator. Shirley, could you put the motion up for us, please? Thank you. And the motion before you is that the proposal towards an anti-racist denomination be received with gratitude and referred to the General Counsel Executive so that in conjunction with other work and initiatives, it can serve as guidance for strategic planning, prioritization and implementation with a report back to the next gathering of the General Counsel. Back to you.
So we aren't voting, as Jordan just posted, we are not voting on the proposal that that Bob presented. We're voting on whether or not to refer it to General Counsel Executive. Okay. And so I'm going to ask you to speak to the wisdom to refer, if you'd like to say anything, Nora and then Sybil.
Yeah, thanks, moderator. It was just to mention that the proposal to refer is coming forward with the agreement of the mover and seconder with of Bob. And it was developed in discussion with them with the agreement that more more work and more time would be appropriate.
Thank you very much. Yes, this was actually in conversation with the mover and seconder of that proposal. Sybil Wilson.
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Sybil, hot shoe falls. In light of the last motion about postponing General Counsel forty-four for two years, it seems a rather long time to wait on a report on this issue. The motion says the next time the General Counsel gathers.
Sybil, my understanding.
If the mover and seconder would make some adjustments to that aspect of the motion or how expeditiously can you adjust that motion so that we're not waiting two years for a report?
Thank you. My understanding that is that the next meeting of General Counsel is the meeting that happens on October twenty-fourth of this year. So I agree, waiting waiting for another couple of years would be too long. But I think we're talking about this coming October is when a report back would be made. Is that acceptable?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Great. Any other discussion on the wisdom to refer? Then, oh, yes, Bill Pollak. Bill, you're on. Oh, you're muted, Bill. Oh, now you're unmuted.
Yeah, I think this gives us a chance over the next six months to four months, whatever it is, to reflect on what is being proposed and be much more ready to act on.
Thank you very much. Are there, if I haven't heard any concerns raised, if there are any concerns, can you please? Okay, Maya Douglas. I can see you, but I can't hear you. No. Can we try? Maya, can you try muting and unmuting your microphone again and just see if that does that? It's okay. No, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It's not a volume thing, is it, Maya?
No, I'm sorry. I can see you speaking, but I can't. I can't hear you. And okay. So Maya is searching for another device at the moment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? I completely understand the issues with microphones for some odd reason today.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, I can hear you.
Maya, you will need to completely mute the speakers on your computer or else go into a different room. We can't have two audio signals in and out of the same room.
I just left the other room.
That's great.
Okay, we can hear you.
And now I've completely forgotten because I'm just old that way. I am concerned around time. And yet not the time that the meeting has continued on and the people have dropped off. I think that the people who are here can still find a way to look at the proposal without actually referring it. I don't know if everyone received the documents, but I received the documents not today. Maybe yesterday or the day before. And because the documents were really important to me and, you know, thank you, Bob, it drew my attention. I read and I reflected. I think the documents are sent to us commissioners so that we read and reflect ahead of the meeting. So I'm just going to take everybody back to the last General Counsel when Paul Douglas Wallfall spoke to us and we had that long time in plenary, overtime in plenary. We've already discussed and reflected and listened to stories. So I respectfully understand why some people may need more time to reflect because we're talking about something that's really uncomfortable. But I'm looking at the proposal and I don't see why we need to refer it any further because the last General Counsel and Paul Douglas Wallfall spoke to us. That was two years ago. This is difficult work. This is difficult work, but it can be done in a timely manner. So I'm sorry about the people who have dropped off and the things they have to do. And yes, we're all busy in ministry. But I keep finding myself, asking myself, why are we referring? Why are we pushing this off? It's pretty clear that the church needs to work towards being anti-racist, and this is an urgent matter. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Maya. Is there another comment about the wisdom to refer? Andrea Allen.
Hi, actually, it's really more a question. If we decide not to refer, does that mean we continue this conversation here? Or what happens in that event?
So I would, I know what I'd like to say. I should probably turn to the business table and the General Secretary about this. I think that if we were going to not refer this to General Counsel Executive, we would need to set another time for the General Counsel to discuss this, because we've definitely reached a thinking and ability limit in this meeting. So I would just like to check with the General Secretary about whether or not I've got that right. But I think we would have to have another meeting. Nora, do you have a thought about that?
Moderator, I guess the first step would be to vote on whether it's to be referred. And if it's voting not to be referred, someone might ask to vote on the motion itself today without further discussion. Others might feel they want more time to discuss it. My understanding from the discussion I've heard is there's no question of naming ourselves a racist church and that kind of thing. That's that's clearly accepted. It was more as to whether that's the correct list of items and that kind of thing. It was interesting in the executives meeting in the other day that even their other ideas were coming up. On the other hand, I certainly understand the wish to move forward. So people could vote on the motion to refer after the determination of that. They could, someone could ask to have a vote on the actual motion and go from there. Whatever way happens with this, this topic is not going away and is going to be very much at work, so.
So we currently have a motion to refer before us, to refer it to the General Counsel Executive. And what I've just heard is that if the motion to refer fails, we'll return to the proposal, and then you can decide whether or not you want to vote on that proposal right now, or take some other action with it. So if I don't see any other comments or questions about the motion to refer to the General Counsel Executive, I'm going to Selena Mullen.
Thanks, moderator. Just really quick, because I don't know all about policy procedure. Are we able to vote now on whether we'd prefer to vote on referring or vote on the actual proposal? Is that possible, instead of having to vote on the referral and then that failing?
Yeah, no, we actually have to vote on the on the motion to refer. And if you want to make a decision about the proposal today, or some other way of dealing with it, the motion to refer has to be voted against. Stephen Sparks.
Very quickly, the concern I have about not referring is not that I wish to delay anything, but considering the steps that would be taken to implement it, I feel that there's more information that's required. I'd like to have it more laid out as to how the steps would be taken that were suggested. I mean, they're all good suggestions, and I support them. But I'd like to know the mechanics of it and have that more laid out. Thank you.
Thank you. So folks, unless I hear any other, okay, Larry Doyle, oh, you can't raise your hand. So Larry, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. So I want to acknowledge the incredible importance of the original proposal, and that it's every intention that I've heard to incorporate, approve, and act on every piece of that with with some, you know, motions of adding or adapting. It just occurs to me that if we approve it today and go through that, that the very first thing we do is to create some sort of working group or task group to take that and then run with it, which is exactly the group that this is being referred to in the referral proposal, the General Counsel Executive Anti-Racism Working Group and the White Privilege Working Group. So both of those already exist and would receive this referral to inform the work that's already in process. So in a way, it kind of doesn't matter which way we do it. If we if we approve the original proposal, we hand it to the working group. And if we refer it, we'd hand it to the working group. Either way, the intention is to act and act now on the on the substance of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sybil Wilson.
Mr. Moderator, I, thank you. I think the previous speaker has said much of what I wanted to say, because I don't know how this work is being integrated with what the White Privilege Group, which I think has been in process for at least two years, have been doing. And I would hate to see a whole lot of repetition between this group and the White Privilege Group and another group. So I would want to vote to refer on the understanding that there is going to be integration of these pieces of work that are all dealing with anti-racism.
Thank you, Sybil. So I, there is a question about whether or not the work will actually get started. I think, Nora, I'm going to turn to you. If it gets referred to General Counsel, will the work actually get started?
Yeah, I mean, some of it already is started, and this gives more clarity and impetus. And I think what we'll be looking to the both the White Privilege Working Group and the Executives Working Group is for priorities, for additional ideas, for a sense of what comes first, that kind of thing. Certainly, the work's going to happen. Certainly, we're going to find ways to assign staff to do it, even at a time where we're about to lay out a lot of staff. The whole part about changing our staff structure isn't just about saving money. It's also about making sure people are allocated, the resources are allocated in the ways that are most important. And we hear that this is, and it's so clear that this is very, very important at this time.
Thank you. Nora, Rolanda Taylor.
Hi. Hello, everybody. Yes, my comments is that we've been talking about this, hearing stories, listening to people, and we have to go further. We have to try and get something in hand that we can work with and establish it. That's my point. Thank you, moderator.
Thank you very much, Rolanda. I am going to call the question on whether or not to, sorry, let me try that again. We have before us a motion to refer to the General Counsel Executive, the proposal that is before us. I'm going to call the question on that motion to refer. If you are in favor of referring, please click yes. If you are opposed to referring, please click no. If you are on the telephone and you wish to vote in favor of referring, please click star nine to raise your hand. If you haven't voted, please vote now. And I'll just come to the other, the negative for the phone in a second. Okay. I'm going to now ask, please, those individuals who are on the telephone who wish to vote against referring, against the, please to raise your hand by clicking star nine. Thank you very much. That motion carries overwhelmingly. So that proposal will be referred to the General Counsel Executive and come back to us at the next meeting of, at the recall meeting in October twenty-fourth. Thank you very much for the discussion. Thank you very much for the additions and for the concerns that are raised and the executive, with the understanding that work has begun and will continue to begin before October. Yes, absolutely. But that has been made very clear by the General Counsel. And I'm watching the General Secretary nod up and down, along with other members of executive. So, yes, as Brenda just mentioned, now we need to get our thoughts into GCE to let them know that what needs to be happening. So thank you. Okay, I'm seeing Paul raise his hand. Paul Douglas Wallfall?
Yes, moderator, if I just would be a lot of point of privilege to say, it's been two years. Been two years since the last General Counsel. Two years and since that time, what is one of our ministers in the United Church of Canada, black minister, has left the United Church to return to his home. Two years and in that time, the issues of racism continue in our church, because many black ministers are finding it difficult to find appointments. It's been two years. And in that time, still, search committees have said they do not want people of a particular color with a particular accent to come to their church. It's been two years. Suddenly now, everybody is up about racism, possibly because Mr. Floyd has died in the way that he died. I would hope that by referring our church is not saying that we need another person to die on television before we are spurred on to action. I speak only for myself as a black man in this church. I heard in the discussion someone speak of how awkward it is for them to share their vulnerability. And I say to myself, that is such a privilege that you have to think about sharing your your vulnerability. I do not have that privilege. Each time I open my mouth to speak, I'm making a constant decision whether or not I am going to be vulnerable or not. And I don't have that privilege. I don't have the privilege of trying to hide the hurts that come to me by the actions of people even within the United Church of Canada. I am a member of the executive. I'm a loyal servant of God. I'm on the anti-black, anti-racism working group. I will work, but I just want to say to the church, it has been two years. Much has happened. If we are serious, I, as a black person, am not simply interested in the kind words or even the apology. As a black person, I want to emphasize, I speak only for myself. I want to see action. Moderator, with love, I thank you.
Thank you for your words, Paul. I am going to move us on, mostly because I'm having problems thinking at the moment. So I'm going to turn to GS seventeen, closing procedural motion, I believe, is next on the agenda. And I will turn to the General Secretary for that.
Thank you, moderator. And I think Shirley will probably put the motion up in front of us. But this is the closing procedural motion, authorizing me to publish the minutes and that this meeting be adjourned.
So that is moved by Nora Sanders, the General Secretary, seconded by Deborah Richards. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate. All those opposed, sorry, in favor, please indicate by clicking yes, opposed by clicking no. Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. And I would turn to Nora for courtesy, please.
Thank you, moderator. And this is just a moment where I get to say thank you. Thank you to all the staff who've made this meeting happen, the elected members, volunteers, who were part of the planning and who took part. And thank you to U.S. Commissioners and corresponding members. This meeting was called on short notice. You came, you took part, you engaged faithfully, and that's so deeply appreciated in the work of our beloved United Church. So thank you.
Thank you. So I note that Sybil's hand is raised. Sybil, I would recognize you.
Oh, I don't think so. I was saying earlier. I'm sorry.
I mustn't have cleared everybody then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard, you're muted.
So thank you very much, Sybil. I'm glad we figured out that I hadn't cleared things here. So let's just take a moment for prayer before we go, please. Shall we pray? Holy God, God of the heavens and God of the earth, God of the moments of great joy and God of the troubled waters. We lift up our prayers and offer them to you today, giving thanks for our ability to gather together, even with the issues, giving thanks for our ability to converse with each other, giving thanks for your wisdom and your grace speaking in us. But we also come to you, praying that our pretty words will not be the end of us. That the words are only symbols for the actions that we live, the changes that we have to make in our structures, in ourselves, the decolonization of mind and heart and soul. We pray that your spirit would be pushing us with those wings, would be pushing me as a white man as much as would be wrapped around every one of our black siblings, every one of our brown siblings, every one of our Asian siblings, every one of our indigenous siblings in safety. Because God, as Paul said, if the only thing that pushes us on is another person dying, then we aren't really saying that black lives matter, are we? We aren't really living it. So push us, God, with all of the strength that is in you. And help us to be Christ's disciples. Help us to be your beloved children. Help us to be one with all creation. Help us to be one with all creation in hope and wonder and resurrection. I pray these things with this community, in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Thank you very much, everyone, for joining together today. I would remind you that our next gathering is for our annual meeting on October twenty-fourth. There we will have the audited financial statements. We will have the report as requested in the referral motion and any other items that may be arising. Peace be with you, siblings, and thank you so much. I declare this meeting adjourned.
And also with you, Richard. Thank you.